Good evening. We will call this Planning Commission meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we will now take a moment to recognize and thank Commissioner Hannah Ellison for serving on the Planning Commission. This will be her last meeting. Thank you very much.
And I just wanted to say a few words. Hannah, you've been great to work with and it would be difficult to replace you. If you ever want to come back, there is a spot for you on the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
And we have a bit of a gift for you. Oh, you got it right there.
Thank you.
So we have a card and there's a gift in there for you and just a small token of appreciation.
Thank you, guys.
And yeah, you've just been wonderful to work with. And it's been great. I mean, the family situation here has been good and it's just been good.
Thank you.
We all have really enjoyed working with you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
And the flowers are by Commissioner Giroux.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you, sir. I love, well, they're beautiful. They look fresh pick. Thank you very much. What are these, by the way? These pink ones are sweet peas. Oh, they're gorgeous. I love those. Thank, you all are going to make me tear up and cry. Thank you very much. I greatly, greatly appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on from that touching moment into consent items. We have draft meeting minutes from October the 28th, 2024. Do we have a motion to adopt those meeting minutes?
I move to adopt the meeting minutes of October 28th, 2024 as written.
Hold a second. All right. All in favor of adopting draft meeting minutes, October 28th, 2024 as written?
Aye.
Aye. All against? None. So the draft meeting minutes for October 28th, 2024 are adopted. We do not have the appropriate quorum for November 25th, so we will punt once again until we have everybody we need to adopt those meeting minutes. Next up is citizen input on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the Planning Commission on non-agenda items. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. Staff and Planning Commission will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before the meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Do we have any citizen input on non-agenda items?
Will you not?
Okay. Easy peasy, moving on. Old business, none. New business, none. And public hearings, none, which takes us to our work session. The purpose of tonight's work session is to give the Planning Commission the opportunity to discuss housing production strategy as presented by Ms. Emma Poricolo, Associate Planner. To make the most of the short time we are given for these work sessions, public comment will not be taken. Instead, we invite public comment at all of the Planning Commission's regular meetings under either of the two opportunities dedicated on each agenda for public comment. In addition, we invite the public to contact city staff with comments or concerns. Although this is a public meeting, the Planning Commission cannot make any formal decisions in a work session. Next step actions are often determined for deliberation and discussion at a properly noticed Planning Commission hearing. And with that, we'll turn it over to Emma for her presentation.
And I was just gonna say a few-
Just kidding, we'll turn it over to Dawn.
I was just saying a few introductory words here and then we'll turn it over to Emma. I just also wanted to introduce Jody from Barry Elsner-Hammon, who's also on the line, and Josh Soper was unavailable. She's here to help us out in any legal questions that might come up here, just as a framework, and they'll continue to provide us with guidance as we go through this process. And just a quick overview of the housing production strategy and kind of the parallel pieces that are moving forward with this. I know you all had seen this previously. We're also doing some things that are parallel with this process. System development charge updates are being reviewed by the City Council. We just had our third work session with City Council. We're going to have a fourth work session, August 6th. That's something really more of a council directive item than a Planning Commission item, but there are items that parallel on system development issues here on scalable system development charges and also some discussion around affordable housing and qualified affordable housing and reductions or removal of system development charges. Council's not really taken a position on these, but they've heard some of the same topical issues in regard to the system development charge update. So that's part of this. Just as a framework, Housing Needs Analysis identified the need for a number of housing product types and also in housing affordability ranges. And with that in mind, the goal of the housing production strategy over eight years, which again is not like one year, it's eight years. And that would be that we would implement these items that would help, especially in the lower ends of affordability for people making less money. The city has limited abilities to make housing affordable, but there are, these are the ways that we have control over in terms of those items that would make things more affordable for residents in this community. So that's part of that framework. We've received fairly specific instruction. The last time this, we were going through this, we were ready to go to hearing. We got some really late comments from Department of Land Conservation and Development. We've gone back through and readdressed those. It's been helpful that in light of the system development charge update review, that that's been helpful in that context. And so we're running these both together, you know, as kind of that program. And I think we're looking for recommendations for you all. We're planning to go to council next in July, July 16th, to do the same work session with them. And then there'll be hearings after that. I think the main focus really here is the two elements that are very strongly emphasized by Department of Land Conservation and Development are stakeholder feedback that we've received to date. That's an important element. And then how are we addressing the range of affordability in the city in ways that other communities, we're being kind of metriced in the way other communities are doing this. It's been a bit helpful actually to take the pause because, that we did as well, because other communities are slightly ahead of us. Malala, Westland, they're going through exactly the same thing. I think Oregon City is as well. They're all kind of in concert. And it's helpful to see where they're going, although they are metro, not Malala, but Westland and Oregon City are metro. It's helpful to understand what the metrics are around this and to get a yardstick. And so our goal is tonight is to be informative and educational in this process to seek your input because this will be transmitted back to the City Council on July 16th. And then from there, move this forward into hearing discussions. We don't have precision in the three items that we're talking about. We don't exactly have a precision formula for, you know, let's say, how many units total per year this might be. We haven't, those things haven't been figured out, but we want to get your input tonight on these items so we can share that with council and then they'll have a further conversation around those. But as we get into it, we'll talk more about the specifics of this and the parameters around that. So with that, I just wanted to give a bit of an update. Like you've heard about this before, it's being revisited. We have to get this completed by the end of the year. I'm not sure what the consequences are. I don't really want to find out what the consequences are if we don't adopt this by December 31st. I really don't want to know what that is. So trying to get through this process and make it work. Some of these are challenging topics and I think it's, you know, it's an item that I think we are just trying to do the best we can within the situation. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Emma.
Thank you, Dawn. You covered most of my presentation. Good evening, everyone. So we are here tonight to discuss the housing production strategy. I'll also just give a quick primer of what we're talking about tonight. Basically, the last time this came before you was in October. At the time, you know, we thought we were ready to start going into the steps of the final version and start going through adoption, but late comments came in from DLCD right before we came to you all, realizing that actually there's a little bit more work that needs to be done here and we're missing some pretty substantial things. Specifically from DLCD, they said we want more strategies that target 0 to 60% MFI. MFI is median family income. You'll hear that a lot tonight. So basically, the way that we perceive that is providing incentives for regulated affordable housing. So, you know, of housing that has restrictions on, and is, you know, managed in a way that it is for affordable housing and it's not necessarily market rate. And the other piece was that we needed more strategies that were financially focused and had some, you know, financial incentives or backing behind it. That was the other piece where they said that we needed to beef up a little bit. So tonight, we have brought three new strategies that we're proposing to add to the HPS. But before we get to those, I want to give a little bit of a refresher on to kind of where we are right now. I'm going to try, I have a lot of slides giving refreshers, but I'm going to try and move through those pretty efficiently and kind of keep it somewhat high level. And then if anyone wants to come back or kind of wants, you know, more details on anything of where we are to date, I'm happy to go back. And I've added a couple breaks into the presentation for us to chat along the way. So this is kind of what I already told you all. We're discussing the HPS tonight. I'm going to give a little bit of a refresher of the HPS and how do we even get to the HPS and where we're at in that process, review the DLCD comments again and show you the strategies we proposed to add and then discuss what the next steps are. So Dawn touched on this a little bit in his intro, but basically the city is undergoing the sequential UGB process. I know you all are aware of this. There's kind of five key steps in the process, which are shown here in these bright blue boxes. And above, you can see the checkboxes. So we've already done, or the population forecast is given to us by PSU. That's already been done. We've completed the housing needs analysis. That was adopted in 2024 of August, August 2024, excuse me. We are now in progress on the housing production strategy and coming back to it. But in the meantime, we did also finish the housing efficiency measures. Those were the code updates for the cottage clusters and the associated housing code updates that we adopted back in November. And we are also simultaneously, mostly the consultants and Dawn are working on the land studies and assessment for the UGB. So, you know, looking at how much land, where do we grow, what's appropriate, that sort of stuff. So I'll start off with a refresher on the HNA, which leads into the HPS and kind of sets the precedent for, you know, what we are looking at within the HPS. So our HNA revealed that we need to add or anticipate roughly 6,000 new residents in Canby over the next 20 years. It revealed that our current housing is not very affordable to many. And so we should focus on improving that and improving housing variety of types and affordability where the city can control that. So the roughly 6,000 residents translates to 1,873 units needed over 20 years. And here you can see the breakdown of the types of units that those are expected to span or we anticipate. So here we show our housing needs. So the overall is we need 2,286 new dwelling units. And the table here again shows the breakdown of what type of dwelling units we are anticipating or targeting. And within that 2,000 or so units, we need 500 of low to moderate income housing. So this is that affordability rate that DLCD was mentioning for the HPS. So about, you know, 80 to 50% AMI and under. So that is a significant number of units to see. And that our future housing mix is mostly single-family and trending towards smaller unit, smaller dwelling units and rentals. Our housing needs analysis also touched on affordability of housing. So in 2022, the median home price in Canby was $560,000. This temperature reader image here shows salaries and how those translates to a suggested mortgage and rental rate. So that shows here that you need an income over 85,000, a household income over 85,000 to afford a median priced home in Canby. Additionally, over 29% of households in Canby spend over 50% of their income on rent, which is classified as severely rent burdened. This number was actually much lower several years prior. And in 2019, the number was 17% and we're now seeing 29. So that's a pretty big jump, but not a very long time. So I will be saying MFI a lot, median family income. So I wanted to put the numbers to these MFI numbers that I'm talking about. So these are the current MFI limits that HUD has and uses. Canby, because we are in Clackamas County, our numbers are used, are kind of within the Portland metro region as a whole. So they're fairly high. So the median in family income is $124,100. So looking at a family of four, very low income is considered 50% of the MFI or less. That's $62,000 approximately dollars a year in income. Extremely low is 30% MFI. That's $37,250. And low, 80% or under is $99,300. So I'll take a break there. Does anyone have any questions, comments, thoughts on what I've just reviewed? Nope. Okay. So we're going now into a refresher on the HPS and kind of what we've done to date prior to this, bringing these new strategies tonight. So as Dawn emphasized, the HPS is really intended to be a framework to promote the development of needed housing. And so when we say framework, we mean these are the types of strategies that we intend to use. And we'll be talking tonight about strategies that will, you know, a lot of details, with anything, a lot of details and implementation will need to be, you know, hashed out. How many years are we talking about when you're talking about deed restricted affordable housing? What exactly are the rates? You know, this is intended to be, choose the overarching strategy and those types of details can be worked out at implementation. You know, there's obviously some important details in there that do affect the affordability, but you know, tonight, we don't have to sit here and say, we are recommending this strategy at this rate for this amount of time. So keep that in mind. You know, these are intended to be high-level strategies. They're tools, actions and policies to promote affordable housing. The implementation is over five to eight years and can be changed in consultation with DLCD. And DLCD recognizes, you know, each community is unique and has unique circumstances and ways to achieve affordable housing. So as Dawn mentioned, I did some comparison to other cities to see where other folks are at and kind of help us get some ideas. But again, right, every community is unique. So that's something to consider. So what have we done to date? So FCS is created the, and led the HPFS, HPS efforts, excuse me. They did an extensive public engagement process. They've come to you all many times to discuss the strategies and work through which strategies we felt was appropriate for the city. They've gone to council as well. And as we discussed, we came in October with what we thought would be our final draft, but here we are again with some DLCD comments. So in October 2023, excuse, October 23rd, we received comments from DLCD to focus on lower-income households and specifically 0 to 60% AMI, excuse me, MFI. And they wanted us to focus on financial measures. And these were significant enough that required changes to the HPS, specifically new strategies, not just kind of tweaks or amendments within the current strategies that we had. We felt like, okay, this is, the magnitude of what's being asked is requires, you know, additional strategies. And so Dawn and I have been working since to kind of, in tandem with what's been going on simultaneously, like the STC work, you know, what is appropriate? What are other folks doing? Where do we feel like is something that we as a city can reasonably do and achieve, but yet meeting these, you know, requirements in a sense from DLCD? So I compared some other cities that are currently, have their HPS published and is currently either under review by DLCD or has received a decision from DLCD. So I tried my best to use comparable cities, but there's only so many cities that are there currently. So I looked at Westland, Malala, Lake Oswego, Independence, the Dows, Milwaukee and Newport. So the first area where we needed to add to being affordable housing, that 0 to 60% MFI, the mean of the number of strategies that all those cities had was 11.6 strategies that addressed that area. Our current HPS only has four. Again, having strategies with some financial focus support backing, the mean was five and we only have one in our current draft. So it shows that, you know, we do have area for improvements in both those two segments. This is just a bit of a refresher also on stakeholder input. That is also something we factored into choosing what strategies to bring to you all tonight. Housing producers and consumers, so both, you know, developers as well as businesses, you know, community members were interviewed. From housing producers, we learned that there's lack of incentive and guidance for affordable housing. We need more incentives for developers to produce that affordable housing, specifically smaller homes and just regulatory barriers in general. STCs, parking, lot size, all affects the cost of housing. From our housing consumers, folks are looking for intergenerational housing, equity, senior housing. Rental rates are too high. And folks believe that the city should take steps to address some of these through purchase of land, rent control measures, development code revisions. So this is the list, or half of the list of the strategies that we have in the HPS currently. And so when I say currently, the strategies that we are proposing to add tonight have not yet been added to the HPS. So this is kind of where everything stands before we make the additions that we are, you know, bringing to you all tonight. And as you'll see, we've already adopted the cottage clusters and the SDC updates are underway. And we also have a few more strategies here. So I will take a break here. Does anybody have questions, comments, thoughts? Yeah.
So when doing the comparison with the Westlands, the Lake Oswigoes and all the other cities you mentioned?
Sure.
Do you, how do we compare with them in terms of population and total geographic area or square miles?
I did not do that comparison.
Okay.
You know, it's hard to distill, these strategies are complex. So I tried to like simplify them as much as possible, but it's really hard to do apples to apples here. So that's kind of why I use a mean and a couple different strategies. Because right, you know, you could talk about that. There's a lot of factors that go in, right? How much affordable housing do they need? You know, like we have our number, kind of what, you know, what are they doing currently? What are they adding?
And then a follow-up to that would be is DL, is DLCD essentially just saying that we need to provide subsidized housing projects here?
Regulated affordable housing. So yes, it's-
Yeah.
You know, this-
That's the nice way of saying it.
That, the level of affordability that we're talking about is just really not feasible without some sort of public subsidy. It's just not, there's no way you can see, when you see it, and I have an example in a couple slides of a project. But you know, if you talk to affordable housing providers, they're, you know, taking every last strategy to make this, these projects barely pencil. So yeah, but that's just kind of how it works today, unfortunately.
Thank you.
I have a question. So, and we may not know the answer, but is there any difference between cities that are in metro versus out of metro and how the strategies might differ?
Do you happen to know that, Dawn? I don't-
I'm just curious. It doesn't-
It's a great question. I think that largely we're kind of in the same bucket, even though, but metro has, I would say they're, you know, they have a bit more pressure on the metro area for density than we do.
Oh, okay.
That's, they have a bit of dynamic that we don't have. We don't have the, and this also depends on the size of the city, but we don't have the same kind of density that the cities in metro have. I would say though, that Westland, back to the question before, is a comparable? I would agree, I would strongly believe they are comparable to us geographically and size-wise. They're very similar to us.
Anything else before I move on? I was just going to say, I think one place we might possibly differ, if we were going to make an argument about it, would be the need for parking since we're not part of metro and we don't have public transit available on the same level as metro. That as we're figuring out our strategies and our incentives, I want to make sure people who need cars to get to work have a place to park them.
And I think you'll notice, we haven't really provided a suggestion on reduction in parking. I mean, that, there is a recognition. I mean, obviously, if you look at the numbers of people that are commuting into Portland, people coming into the city and then people living and working in Canby, it's very, very skewed in terms of we're commuter, we're basically a commuter city, you know, largely. And that hopefully will change over time with more employment, but that's where we stand.
So I will continue on and give you an overview of the three strategies that we have proposed. So we have first proposed an SDC payment plan, which is authorized via the Bancroft Bonding Act. That is essentially the SDCs get paid over a 10, you know, over a set period of time, usually like 10 years, with interest paid over that. Full or partial SDC waivers for regulated affordable housing or allocate some CET, which is construction excise tax funds towards affordable housing. So I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but all three of these strategies basically meet what DLCD said to us, which is 0 to 60% AMFI or MFI and, you know, have financial support. So since we're talking about affordable housing, I just wanted to touch a little bit on kind of what do we have now? So there is some existing regulated affordable housing in Canby. There's a great resource through the county housing authority that lists out some affordable housing within the community. Most of them are targeted for seniors, so 60 years old plus. One example is the Canby Village Apartments, which is located in the northwest area of town. It's senior housing. Their rental rates are, if it's a regulated unit, is 30% of income. If rental assistance is available, if not, the rental rates are there, which is 840 for one bedroom and 1,100 for, or about 1,100 for a two-bedroom. Another example is Casa Verde. This is on South Township. This is for farm workers exclusively. There's 26 units and you can see here the rates for the housing. There's 26 units and you can see here the rates for the housing currently. So we, we wanted to talk about some kinds of affordable housing that we may see in talking about these levels of affordability. And one model is the Habitat for Humanity ownership model. And so what Habitat for Humanity does is they generally serve families between 30 to 80% MFI. They also take in some other factors for folks who may qualify for their housing. So how it works is the family secures the first mortgage through a third party lender and that mortgage is solely 30% of their income. The remainder is a second mortgage that is held by Habitat for Humanity. If all goes well, that second mortgage is interest free and is forgiven after 15 years. And then somebody has a home and it has been an affordable home that they can live in and, you know. So one example of a project that Habitat for Humanity has is they have a project that is in Silverton that was approved, approved in 2021 for land use. It is, it looks like they're starting to go on it, but it's slowly getting built. The development is 18 units, both single family homes and fee owned duplexes. So basically the duplexes where the individual lot is on its own, or sorry, the individual unit is on its own lot, but they're attached. We talked to Habitat, the, the local Habitat organization about this project to see, you know, what did make this project pencil? How, how was this able to work? And they said that the city did give them SDC exemptions as well as they were exempt from the school CET, which is separate from the CET that we'll be talking about later. But so there, there were incentives that were given to help them make this project So as we go into talking about the strategies we propose, just a bit of a reminder that conditions can be applied to the development to make, to, that can take advantage of the incentives. Again, we don't need to hash out those exact conditions tonight, but something to keep in mind as we're talking about this, you know, are, are there certain conditions that you feel are, you know, imperative for you to support the strategy is kind of a question to be asking. Possible restrictions include how long is the deed restriction? Basically, how long does it have to be affordable? 20, 50 years, that sort of thing? The affordability rate also, you know, what are we targeting? And again, these are intended to be frameworks that we're talking about. So we don't have to have the specific style down. So the first one, the SDC payment plan, the Bancroft Bonding Act. Basically it allows local governments in a sense to finance the SDC improvements by bonding them for up to 10 years. So they split it into a 10 year payment plan with the interest set upfront, but then the developer has some time. So we have some projects that have already used this. One example is an apartment. So they are able to be making, you know, they are able to make income off of the rent to pay some of the SDCs because they have been able to defer the SDCs. Some cities that currently use this tool are West Lynn, Medford, Grants Pass and Milwaukee. The affordability target, it generally serves zero to 120 MFI. So basically the full range of housing and we anticipate or propose implementation to begin in 2028. The next strategy is full or partial SDC waiver for affordable housing. Currently the city does allow SDC waiver for what the quote, the code says very low income persons or families per HUD criteria. This waiver is subject to council approval. So what we are proposing is that we would basically revise the policy so that if, if you, if you meet this certain affordability criteria that we would, you know, put specific numbers to, then you would first, you would certainly get it. And then there's more certainty for affordable housing developers. But they would have to meet a certain rate of affordable housing in order to qualify for this. And it is a very common tool. Several cities use this, including Canby, Salem, Lake Oswego, Ashland, McMinnville, Florence, Newbury and Forest Grove. And I think that was just a sampling, not the full list, but just an example of the, the conditions or parameters you could set. So Tiger, it allows full SDC waivers for affordable housing that serves 80% MFI or under, and those units must, must remain at that affordability rate for 20 years. This strategy serves 80, zero to 80% MFI and we suggest implementation to begin in 2029. I will note this implementation year is one year different from the memo we sent out before the meeting. So we, we looked again and decided to push it back a little bit. And the last one is to allocate some CET, construction excise tax funds towards affordable housing. CETS are flexible funding source derived from new development. So currently we charge $1 per square foot for all new development in the city. So with those funds, we can choose to set aside a portion of that for affordable housing. And then because it is entirely a local fund, we have some options for how we choose to give that to affordable housing. So we can choose to do it in a lot of different ways, being like helping with public improvements, you know, streets, sidewalks, that sort of thing. There's just one example of what we can use it for. So the CET seems to be a very common and popular tool in the HPS documents from many cities. Some examples Newport, Milwaukee, Monmouth, West Lynn and Happy Valley. It serves zero to 120 MFI and implementation to begin in 2029. Again, this is one year after the memo.
Does CET apply to non-residential housing?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that is my overview of the three strategies we've proposed. Staff recommends including all three strategies in the HPS and allowing full SDC waivers for affordable housing projects. But we are here to hear and discuss it with you before we bring this to council.
And just a bit of more information, the Bancroft Bonding Act, SDC payment plan, we haven't vetted that discussion with council yet. And the CET funds, we have not vetted that with council yet, but we have talked about full or partial SDC waiver for regulated affordable housing. The comments from council and work session were focused on this being perpetuity and not being a 10 year waiver and then going back to market rate, which was a concern. So we're open to suggestions. The Habitat model, I believe is perpetuity because there's an ownership and a mortgage in the end of that process. Some individuals pay that off sooner than others, but the end game is a mortgage for someone that qualifies in perpetuity. So that may not be the only example. There may be faith based groups that, that also propose things in Canby. We've seen that in other communities successfully done. And the structure of that usually is a, is a, you know, faith based, more mainstream, whether it's Catholic or a mainstream group. Those are typically what we're seeing where that, that there's a structure behind that.
So when we go back to the split of, I think it was 30% single family and then 32%, what was it? Yep. Okay. So you have 30% single family and then we're saying 32% single family, small lot and cottages. Those aren't the ones that we were taught, we're necessarily talking about for these programs. Are you focused more on townhomes, plexes, manufacturer homes and apartments? Or the bottom, the bottom three of the list of four there is kind of the focus for all these.
I think it really would be the bottom two is the, the focus. That's, and there's about 500, like we mentioned, low and moderate income. That's, that's kind of 500 plus or minus. Those are, those are the, that's the target, I think.
So when you look at that and you look at the, the SDC fees that would be normally assessed versus the, what the delta would be between deferring or forgiving some of those, what that says to me is that the top two are going to wind up getting SDC increases at some point to make up for the shortfall, which then that would factor into the price. And then the homeowner is ultimately going to pay that in the purchase of the home. So how does that, how does that pencil? That doesn't seem like equity to me. It seems like we're just shifting the cost.
And really it's a great question. I mean, part of this will have to come from our consultants, but the short answer is I think in small quantities, it may not make any material difference whatsoever in terms of the overall, I mean, I don't think it's a, it's a shift burden necessarily to make this, to make this work. I think it's, if it's a small number of units each year, you know, I think that this is over like essentially the goal really is a 20 year horizon here. So we're looking at incrementally, how does this get chipped away at over time? It's a great question though, and the one that will definitely add to the discussion with council on, you know, does that make a material, does that shift, what does that shift burden or is there a shift burden? I can't answer that completely, but, but I think the general answer is I think small numbers from our consultant would not make a big difference in, in that increase for others.
I'm just looking at pure unit, you know, quantity. You got seven, 800 homes in the bottom two categories and 1,100 some, some odd homes in the upper two categories. So if I'm just thinking SDC or CET by unit, that's, that's like a massive shift in my mind. So I, I could tell you, I wouldn't be supportive of waiving. At a minute, my threshold would personally only be for deferment and payment over time. I think yes, over 20 years, but that's a lot of money. That is a lot of money.
Just for my sanity, for clarification, when we say, when we're talking about SDC and SDC waivers, are we talking about like, for example, because what I think of in my head is like when I'm showing homes in Portland and they, they do these infill homes and they qualify for SDC waivers. So the price is this, unless you don't qualify, then you add 30 grand to it. That's what we're talking about, right?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. So for a single family home, right now our SDC is about 17,500.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't have as much residential infill, so I don't know how we would handle.
In Portland, it's crazy. It's pretty common as well. And I think the cutoff for them is like one, I think it was like, I was like, whoa, that's, that's great, I guess, in a sense. It was like one, 140 or 160.
And it's based off your income?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's kind of.
Yeah. Annual.
Yeah. And I'm not sure how you would do that on such a large scale of like purchase, you know, we, I guess, Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, but our assumption through a lot of this is when we say regulated affordable housing, you know, we, the city aren't managing, making sure they stay affordable right there. There's other, you know, there's other federal money or incentives being used that are kind of helping keep this, making sure that the affordability stays in check and that we're not just, you know, kind of one person got off with a, with a good deal.
I think the parameters around this would be, it would be for sure either a contract or development agreement. This is going to go with the title of the land. And so I, I don't think there's necessarily an appetite, at least by some council members for something that's just a 10 year waiver. And you see that a lot in communities and it goes back to market weight rate and then people end up being evicted and they can't, you know, or they can't pay the rent.
Right.
So that, there's really not an appetite for that, that piece of it. So this would have to be, what we're looking for is if the council were to want to go that direction, what parameters would you recommend for that to be, you know, you know, is it 20 year horizon? Is it 30? Is it, you know, what is that? Is it, you know, 50? I'm not sure what, if you ask Habitat that question, I think they would probably say it's perpetuity because that ends up becoming a mortgage and that person qualified for that.
Right.
And that would be, you know, or in, back to Emma's question, is it partial or is it full? And I think that, that's really what the direction we're trying to seek from you all. And kind of back to our current formula, which you guys did not have the advantage of looking at SDCs, but the current SDCs, for example, and they're all going to be raised. But, cause everything is low in Canby. I mean, it's just, we're probably, we're at the bottom of the pack. Basically we're one of the lowest in the entire metro area. But let's say, for example, our current, we don't really have scalable SDCs now. Accessory dwelling unit is almost 13,000. A, and a, either a townhome or townhome or cottage or a standard house is 14,693. So there is no scalability in our current system. So back to the question about if you did 25 units a year or whatever, you know, I'm not sure if that's the number or maybe even 50. I'm not sure. We're, we're formulating this. So in a way I, I think there's, there's a great opportunity here to be looking at this to say, well, what is the difference? And, and I think it's based on the number that would be permitted, which is completely up to the city as to how many would be allowed. And these are, I don't think we're talking hundreds of units suddenly coming in. It's just not going to happen where organizations like Habitat, they're all small developments. I've done many builds. I'm not necessarily doing a sales pitch for them, but I've done a lot of work with that group and various organizations and building and sponsoring those. And I think it's, it's a good way to go about providing a home for someone that may not otherwise have that. Again, and what part do we play in that is the question? You know, is it, is it just the deferral of the SDCs, which we've done a few times at the city. It's our discretion. That's a discretionary thing. We can do that at our discretion and it's usually prime rates or the city's not losing anything. It's just deferring that, that, that over a period of time.
What's the period of time?
We've typically done 10 years and we've done it for industrial as well as multifamily. And so I didn't even know that existed as a tool, but like somebody, our prior attorney said, yeah, you can do it. And so, but we also found out from our current attorneys, that's completely discretionary. So we, that's our call on that. And so a lot of these are like, they're, they're about how we try to create opportunities where, you know, it's not a whole scale, like, you know, complete escalation of like everything else, you know, but at the same time chipping away at the fact that there's clearly a need in the, in the community that we know.
So if we set a 20 year sunset on the mandate for affordability, is there a renewal option? Is there a formal, like you're out process? It's, it's all or nothing?
So I guess I, I want to clarify that the, the, you know, the, the program wouldn't go for 20, it's not saying the program's going to last 20 years. It would say that you're prop, you know, you built the property, this property now and the deed says the next 20 years. And so, but I don't know what it looks like after.
But in the deed, it's you, this will be deemed as subsidized housing for 20 years.
Correct. It, you must meet this level, you know, provide this level of affordable housing for.
So I would have to believe that Tiger chose to go with 20 for a reason. And I would love to know why.
Which I think is on the, the Tiger example, I think is on the lower end of some of the others that I saw.
And that's where I would be.
Yeah.
Hannah, I wanted to add one thing to your comment. So it sounds like the Portland model too, is maybe more SDCs are being charged at occupancy. Whereas, cause if it's based on who's purchasing, right? Then whereas we, we don't do that. You have to pay before, you have to pay your SDCs before you can get your building permit.
Okay.
So we, so right in the Portland model, it sounds like it's really dependent on who buys, whereas we would have that certainty when you're, you know, when you're building, we would know, you, you know, before you start breaking ground, you would have to know this is going to be affordable or not versus who shows up at the door.
Curious about, cause that, cause that didn't quite make sense in terms of translating it to Canby because in Portland, and I'm still learning about it, but in Portland, it's very much so like this is the price of the home and it's marketed at the, the lower price, if you will, assuming that whoever buys it will qualify. If you don't qualify, you add 30, 25 or 30 grand to that purchase price. You don't qualify for the SDC waiver and you have to pay that. And there's no, there is no negotiating.
Yeah.
That's what it is. And I was like, whoa. So then as soon as you said SDC, that's where my mind went. I was like, how does that, that doesn't translate to Canby very well though.
Yes.
It doesn't. So, but it's, it's just, it's really common in all the infill, new construction stuff happening in Portland.
Must be a new provision. Yep. But yeah, and also I think that, that difference speaks to a lot more of, right? We, we know kind of upfront where we're getting versus we let all these units get built and maybe, you know, right? Then you don't quite know how, I mean, sure infill, you're, you're only going to get so many, but you don't know how many are going to be affordable, whereas we would know before breaking ground.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
Cause I was trying to make it make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't see where we would want to go around where it could potentially go to people who don't meet affordability criteria, because it seems like you're just, yeah, it seems like you're kind of like throwing away that opportunity for it to be available to someone who needs it, if anybody can buy it. Um, yeah.
And we agree with that completely. I, I, there's two things. One is the managerial side of these. Portland has a housing authority. We do not have a housing authority and housing authorities generally in larger jurisdictions and they have staff, they have a lot of staff. We want something simple, very clear and, clear and objective. We want something simple, very clear and objective, that is easy for us to implement so that we're not really monitoring this. And that's thus the kind of the, okay, how did you qualify for this? What was the vetting process? What's the institutional track record of this organization? You know, and that's part of this is that it's not, you know, that it is something that's been proven out in other communities, whether, you know, faith-based and they end up owning it, and the faith-based organization just has apartments, for example, like there's some in Portland where they just own it, and the church owns it. And so they, but they have it. Or like somebody else owns it for Habitat. You put sweat equity in and you pay mortgage over 15 years, and then you end up owning the house in the end. So those are the kind of parameters we're looking for to not make this crazy, crazily complicated, but at the same time, if there were an organization that came in, and we've had some, Habitat has come to the table. They've come to our recent project advisory committees for their, for our comprehensive plan update, and they're obviously interested in this community. They're looking at it. That's, and you saw what happened in Silverton, you know, that they were obviously a bit ahead of us on some of that, and they ended up getting a project in Silverton in part, I think, because of the, what Silverton did and that formula for what made that work for them.
So the couple of things that I'd want to throw out there is, a concern I would have for anything that has to do with you qualify at X level of income is to build in some degree of wiggle room for people. So if they are going to make a little bit more in the future, that they're not getting kicked out of anything. Because one of the things that happens a lot with stuff that's focused on low income in particular is you're basically penalized for making a little bit more. And you don't want people who are kind of on the cusp to not do better or have what they need, because there's this ceiling that they're afraid of bumping up against. So I would want to build in some kind of wiggle room, especially for anything that's like shorter term. And then for when we might delay fees, if they're the SDCs or the CETVs or whatever, will there be a language written into the contracts that even if these things are being sold to different managing entities or whatever, nobody's going to get out of it? It goes with any future transfers of the property until such time as whatever needs to be paid is paid, so that we don't lose sight of it.
Wouldn't they have, wouldn't that be covered in the deed, though?
You would think so.
Yeah.
So when they, when they do their diligence, their title, it's just, it's all, yeah.
Maybe we make it a requirement that it has to be like disclosed upfront or something, so it's not like somebody buys it, and then they're getting ready to sign the paperwork, and then it's like, oh, by the way, this is in your deed, and you're going to get smacked with a pretty significant fee at some point. And then something that the city of Portland has done, and it was in the news recently with Habitat, is they were basically offering waivers to reviews and approvals to try and move affordable housing projects through. And then had issues where there really wasn't the level of diligence that was needed in reviewing things with the fire department and making sure that there was access for trucks to be able to get in and out of the complex that was built. So if at some point we start discussing kind of like some kind of waiver or easy approval option, we want to make sure that we make sure we're keeping all of those reviews in the forefront and thoroughly doing it on the early end of things, so nothing comes back and bites us in the butt, because we don't want to put all the time and energy into building something for our community, and then it's basically unsafe, because you can't unbuild it. It's still going to be there, but it could potentially be a problem.
I have several questions.
Yeah.
Again, so the strategies that we're seeing that other cities are using, I think these are early days, so they're sort of unproven, right? It's good to have strategies, but do we really have metrics that say they spin the dial for affordability? Or do they, not we, but do they?
Sure.
Other than we hear the faith-based, but do we really notice the SDC side of it? Does that really spin the dial? We don't know, right?
So I guess I'll say, you know, I haven't seen anywhere kind of what you're talking about, like A to B, right, like this yielded this. The, when the state made this requirement for these HPS studies, they came up with an extensive list of, here's the studies we recommend because we've seen this proven and effective. And they list out cities where, you know, they were doing this before the state said, hey, everyone's got to get this in line. So, you know, the state is saying, we believe this is effective and we support these strategies. And all the strategies we brought to you tonight are from that list.
Okay.
And also, I think the Silverton example is, you know, right, it's just one example, but that is a good example that shows, you know, the SDC waiver did make a difference there.
It hasn't been built yet, right?
No, because, yeah, they're, it's in progress, I guess. I think they have one or two units, but also their model is, right, Dawn, they build collaborative, like they build it with volunteers. So I think that's a time.
They do.
I think that's a time.
And we do have a testimonial here. We have an email, so I was finding that while she was speaking. So for Silverton.
Interesting. It's early days. How do communities decide to offer like SDC discounts versus waiving building fee, building permit fees as a strategy? That's, you know, it's one time, it's done, one and done. You don't have to worry about 10 years. It's, why are SDCs chosen versus building permit fees?
They're a larger fee. They're just, they're a significant fee. Permit fees.
In Canby, anyway.
I mean, permit fees are, they're, they help recuperate labor cost, the costs for the department, but they're not necessarily creating like a revenue source. And permit fees in general are not supposed to be a revenue exceedance situation. It's supposed to be, you're collecting a fee to do a service. I believe there's probably, I think there's laws against actually banking on like, hey, we're just going to crank up our fees and use that as another funding source that goes beyond the effort of your permit process. So, and they're also indexed in, we're going through a permit fee update right now, ironically. We need one in '21, and we're doing another.
So the bottom line is, it's not as much money.
It's not as much money. And even with the averages across the other cities, it's just, it's just not as much revenue as a SDC is.
Okay, and has there been, I would feel comfortable if there was some discussion with like the budget committee about when we think about a strategy for reducing SDCs, since it's substantially more than building permit fees, what's the impact to the budget and then that impact to the city for what those fees are covering? I mean, it's hard for me to wrap my head around it. If they're substantial, then, then there's got to be an impact to the city. And what is it financially?
Well, a lot of the SDCs, the impression that I'm getting is that they were kind of started or have inflated as a result of our property tax limitations that we passed back at the end of the last century. And so, you know, and that's one of the things that I've been hearing in the news lately is that municipalities, as this law, these property tax limitations have rolled on for decades now, municipalities are having a hard time getting things taken care of. And so we're relying more and more on these SDCs to get suburbs built and roads taken care of and things of that nature. And so one of the things that kind of I think blows a lot of this, and it's one of the reasons why I kind of disagree with the subsidy language, is because really, we're subsidizing homeowners. It's a wealth tax cut. The SDCs are backfilling that. So anything we do to manipulate the SDCs is actually we're manipulating a remedy that was caused by our anti-tax laws that we passed in the past. And so one of the things that I've been hearing lately is that the legislator is starting to take a look at that 3% number, that doesn't allow our property taxes to increase any more than 3% and just to throw a lifeline to the city so that they're not having to try and recoup all this money through all of these other myriad little ways, which is really driving people in Portland crazy, because every individual bureau and every individual organization has their own special fee and tax base to help them operate. And really, we could do this a lot simpler. But, you know, there's a pretty strong lobby associated with real estate in this state, and those property tax limitations have been very profitable for a lot of people. And so it's going to be hard to crack them. But, you know, there we are. And down in the weeds and trying to wrestle with this problem that, you know, is several decades old and kind of we're dinking around with remedies of remedies of dealing with something that was a little bit short-sighted, I think, at the time.
Just to finish up on some of my questions, so what's the county's role in subsidizing this for us? None?
Well, they're independent from us. I mean, I, that would be, I mean, they do do our building permit reviews.
No, I'm not talking about that specifically, just in general, to help the cities.
Oh, okay, I got you, okay.
Get these goals met.
Well, they do, they do their own housing production strategy. I mean, is your question more on like?
How are they helping Canby meet these numbers?
Right, okay, because they have, they're more of a regional entity. It's, I'm kind of hearing what you're saying. They're regional in the sense, and they are, I mean, they do, the projects that Emma showed, the county, that was on their website. I mean, I don't know the specifics of what contribution they're making. They're obviously organizing to the point of like trying to facilitate affordable housing, even within cities. That's something they do.
That's what I'm wondering. I don't, I'm looking for a slide that says, here the county is, here's how the county specifically is helping us meet these numbers.
Well, and I don't think they're going to necessarily be revenue providing to the city, but they are a facilitator of sorts. I believe they helped Malala with their apartment complex that they did, which is for more affordable housing that was built. They were instrumental in organizing and coordinating those efforts with either nonprofits or this is, I think that's their role, and we can get more information on that.
It sounds like not much.
Well, I would, I shouldn't say.
Am I reading that wrong?
I think they've done more than we realize, but they're not actively really engaged with us at Canby. We should probably, you know, we've tried to reach out to them to get some more information. We haven't actually connected, but that, I don't want to.
To me, that's the state's responsibility, is to say, hey, the counties have to help the cities.
Yeah, well, they are.
The cities have to help.
They're more of a regional entity for sure, and that, I mean, I think, you know, they are, they did, they did an investigation independently of our housing production strategy on rural residential areas outside of the boundary, urban growth boundary. And they did hire a consultant to go through that exercise. I don't know what the results were of that, but, yeah, they did, yeah.
No, I just, yeah, okay, so.
Dawn, can I, I think, so I think I maybe, I think this is correct. So they have, right, they have a housing authority, which is like the county level that manages both like, they help get affordable housing developed and manage kind of, and, you know, keep, monitor what is there. But from my understanding.
Incorporated areas, is that?
Through, yeah, largely, but, or like the Malala example, maybe, right? They're seeking opportunities within the entire county, but it's kind of like where the opportunity falls and is right, right? Because as we say, you're pinching pennies to make these projects happen. So they're not necessarily obligated, or they have no specific obligation to Canby as a jurisdiction. They're just kind of county-wide and probably more focused on their unincorporated areas for housing.
So I remember Canby, I'm sorry, Clackamas County HUD had put out a bid package and Walsh Construction does usually a lot of their affordable housing. This was a massive complex they did in Milwaukee. And now Milwaukee is part of metro, so I don't know if there's some metro dollars there. But it was bid out by Clackamas County HUD, and it was some crazy number of units, like three, four, 500 units in multiple phases that they were doing. So I know that there's some involvement there, because the bid was, it was solicited by them, but for a specific location within Milwaukee. So I don't know if, it sounds like what Judy's saying is, would they do that for Canby? If we have all this land that we've appropriated for certain subsidized housing, would they assist in doing the same thing to help meet the goal?
I think.
Not that I'm putting words.
I think.
I guess to me, we pay county property taxes in Canby. And so to me, that gives them some responsibility to at least say, hey, here's how we might be able to help. Anyway, all right, thanks.
And point well taken. I think they're also looking for cities to initiate as well, like, it's more of like a cooperative, but we will do some more due diligence on that piece of it and as part of that.
Maybe part of our strategy response is saying, we're also looking to the county to contribute.
That's one of our strategies, yeah, but that was not enough by itself.
No, I know.
This is where we're at.
Thank you.
Needed to go beyond that.
Judy, I want to add to one of your comments about, you know, the impact and financially. I guess one thing I will say is, you know, Dawn and I thought really hard about like, what is the financial impact, you know, trying to understand, like, what are we proposing? And, you know, where can we have something that, you know, is reasonable or kind of keep it within reason, but also, you know, meet this, this heavy lift that DLCD is asking of us essentially? And so, you know, we did really intentionally choose strategies that are only getting, getting used if the housing is proposed. So let's say we don't get any affordable housing proposals in the next year, for whatever reason, that none of this money is being set aside. I mean, potentially a CET, but we haven't discussed, you know, the amount percentage. But, you know, some cities were talking about land banking. Then you have these resources sitting in this other thing that may not be used. So we really intentionally tried to, you know, use more flexible or have these strategies where we're not pulling resources unless we know something is happening. That was really intentional on our end, so.
Makes sense, thank you. Yeah, I really think the budget committee has some role in that, though, figuring that out or looking at it.
And I think to the extent, I mean, we have consultants that are doing the SDC work. So, I mean, this is all going to go back to them. I'm actually talking to them tomorrow about something else. But they're doing multiple things for the city, but I will bring that up to them and say, we need some quantification of what this would look like. Or, you know, back to the shifting piece, the question, the first question was, is it a huge shift to others or not? You know, we're reformulating the whole SDC to a degree on what we've done before on the scalable piece of this. It may end up being that market rate apartments are, you know, they may pay more, you know, that, for example. And the challenge here is, we're trying to focus on where can we make the difference within those ranges of median family income? It's great if there's more market rate everything, but it doesn't solve the problem. You know, that's, that's the issue, yeah.
I just noticed Jody hasn't said a word this whole time. Is this her time to jump in or no?
Yeah, yeah.
We don't even want to venture into, I haven't seen your first draft. So if you have questions, I can absolutely answer them, but I don't want to jump into a conversation until I've at least read your first draft, or the one you submitted to DLCD.
And we're working towards that, and Jody's, you know, we're kind of bringing Barry Elsner-Hammon up to speed here. And part of the reason we're, we're going through that kind of detailed exercise is trying to find the right, where we need to be. Ultimately, DLCD has authority to remand this back to us. If we are, they feel we are not meeting the objectives of what we're supposed to be covering in our housing needs analysis, which has been adopted. So that's really the bookend of this, and so our goal here is to try to fit this into, and every jurisdiction's going through the same thing.
So, just to be a little fiery ginger. So I hear you say they have that authority.
Yeah.
Then what? So they remanded? Then what?
No, they have, no, no, well, they were comments. That's a whole lot different than a remand. That's a whole nother level, and our attorneys are going to be way involved with that.
Time, like, what are we talking about here? Fines? Yeah, like what?
Comments are one thing.
You know, what, I mean, what if, just playing devil's advocate a little bit, because I know you're not going to allow it to happen anyway, but what if we said, no, this is our best plan? Then what?
Well, I think of it, this is, this is why Jody's on the line, because, you know, and again, I'm not going to put her on the spot tonight, but this is why we have them involved, because.
Jody's an attorney?
Yes, yeah, for Barry Elsner.
Oh, man.
So.
You should talk to my company attorneys. They keep me out of trouble a lot. I do a lot of this hypothesizing, and then they go, no, Matt, you'll go to jail if you do that. I'm like, all right, then the problem solved. Next, next item.
Well, my thought at the end of the day, when council says, you know, you know, when we have that question, if that comes up at the end of the day, is, let's hypothetical situation, like we go through and we adjust this, and we feel it's meeting the intent, and we get some feedback from our council saying, we believe we're meeting the intent. And then the question for our city council will be, going the course in spite of that comments that we receive or not?
Yeah.
That's where we're at. And every jurisdiction is in the same boat, and these are not black and white lines. They're, they're not completely black and white, is all I'm going to say.
All right.
Yeah.
So the brown shirts aren't coming for us, is what you're telling me. I just want to be clear. Yet, okay, just checking.
Quit stressing Dawn out.
All right, yeah, I can tell. He's getting him all uncomfortable. All right, I'll shut up. All right, yeah, I can tell he's getting him all uncomfortable. All right, I'll shut up.
So I think, we'd like to get more comments from you, but let me, this, to fill in the gap here for momentarily, give you a chance to think about it. We will be coming back, you all will be seeing this for a hearing, and, and we'll be going back through that process before council gets to it. So you're going to see this loop back after council work session um, on July 16th. You're going to be, we'll be coming back on August 11 and having a hearing, and then you guys will be making a recommendation officially.
I will holster my comments until then.
Can I add to, so, so basically, we'll take your comments today, we'll bring basically the same presentation to council and say, you know, and add, here's what we heard from PC, you know, here's where we're at. With all that feedback, we'll then go and make the revisions to the HPS and add um, what we decide based on all the input we've received. And then we'll, we'll start to go to, so then that final draft will become our hearing draft. Um, and it gets adopted by resolution. So we come to you first with the um, adoption draft in August on August 11th.
Not a comment, it's more of a question. So will, in that time, will we be able to entertain what council person Jeroche had to say? Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jeroche, not council person, sorry, I promoted you. Will we be able to take into account some of those things, the numbers, the, talking to budget committee, things of that nature?
And I, I, I think the, since the Budget Committee has already met for the year and the final budget is going June 18, I'm going to provide an alternative to that. So our, our consultants will provide that information. We will, that will be answered, like, what is the implication to the city's budget? And under what scenarios, you know, let's, it's, we do 25 a year, if we do 50 a year, what does that mean? That's the stuff, and this is why we're taking notes, so that when we get, this is helpful because it helps us answer questions at the council, because they're usually going to say, what does a planning commission think? You know, that's the, the body below, you know, giving a recommendation.
Well, and then in the interest of all the opinions too, you know, Commissioner Hutchinson's comments as well, like, can that be taken into account? You know, what, the, what were you saying about the-
Whether you see SDCs as a zero-sum game, you know, if it stands alone or is it backfilling something else? And so by eliminating part of it, does it really change a body of numbers, I guess? Or is it conjectural?
And then, the other part of it, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure if, if he still, if you want me to answer this, and I'm, I'm really happy to put this in an email. But generally speaking, the consequence of not following planning statute, which is essentially what House Bill 2003 is, is enforcement actions in DLCD. And so there are sort of dire consequences if you just sort of refuse to comply. And it could complicate planning in the city of Canby. Or at the very least, get a stern lashing from DLCD.
So, Jody, can you, on a scale of one to 10, one being a wrist slap, 10 being death, where does the dire fall on that scale?
There is no scale, so it is um, there's a worst-case scenario, which would be DLCD takes over planning at the city level. Uh, that is-
I mean, aren't they doing that anyway with the House bills right now? You know what I mean? I mean, Jesus crimin-y, it's, oh, now my ginger's really coming up. Oh, this is, sorry, go ahead, Jody.
Something like that's not going to happen with something so complicated as low income housing. All of the bills that have come out of the legislature over the last three, four years, I don't see that happening. They're going to have some patience, but their patience will eventually rip in. So that is sort of what you're looking at in terms of enforcement. It's coming from the state. And they are paid due for the power.
Gotcha.
I would also add to that, I think, Dawn, you, but the, the HPS is an essential piece of our sequential UGB process that we have committed to. So that's another piece to consider.
And I, I think that uh, what we're, I, I think all, everything that's been said, I think is important here. I, I think that um, we've been, it's a, it's a, it's a, been a benefit relationship in many ways, and I want to say this is not one-sided with DLCD. We've, we've, we've received a lot of grants. And I would suspect that those would be lost or, you know, jeopardized. So this all goes and plays together to some degree. Um, I, I think part of this is every city has had to go through the same um, review. And foundationally, this comes down to, if there's a need in your community, you need to try to do the best you can to address it. And it's um, and that is really what this is all about. And I think if the state wasn't in play here, we would still be wanting to look at that anyway. I mean, I think that would be, you know, strong housing policies relate to things that we have control over, to the extent we have control over them. Not a perfect system, you know, to Commissioner Hutchinson's point. I don't know if the tax structure is going to change here or not. It is, the system is in play. It feels like it's going to be in play for a while. You know, um, there are limited things we can do with our um, with what we have to offer. And limited resources, to be quite frank. I mean, there's, there's not infinite resources. This last budget round was not easy. And there's not infinite reserve that the city can just throw at stuff.
And the goal is that, is a healthy community.
Yeah.
And uh, by failing to deal with housing issues, we deal with the same problem expressed in other ways. And so, you know, despite the fact that this may be a painful process and complicated, it's, I think it's worth getting to where we need to go.
Okay, so where do we go from here? Do we continue?
Well, yeah, if there's other recommendations on what we should be like implementing, suggestions, what we should be asking at the next council discussion. So when we come back and see you all again in August, that we're back on track and, you know, that would be the goal.
Could we look at slide six again real quick?
What's that?
I asked if we could look at slide six again real quick. So um, I know that this has been updated from earlier, but it is still very, very optimistic about what different income levels can afford. It basically seems to me like the assumption is you have zero other debt or money going out to anything whatsoever other than housing. And then we're saying, oh, we can take 30% of what you make. You don't have a car payment. You don't have insurance payments. You don't have student loans. You don't have to buy groceries. So somebody making $128,000 would not qualify for a mortgage of $655,000, even if they had zero debt. And you're not going to find many lawyers who have zero debt. So it's very, very optimistic. And I saw on the slide prior, on slide five, I believe. I think, or maybe it was slide seven. There was something that got updated to, here we are, to say that the median family income of 124. So I saw that that got updated from the 89,000. Let's get a little bit more realistic about what a median family income might be. But the buying power on slide six is still way out of whack with reality. So when we're talking about focusing on 0 to 60% MFI, if what's 0 to 60% MFI can actually buy, we're assuming slide six to be accurate, then we might need to go a lot higher to actually make a dent for people. Because 0 to 60% MFI, based on slide six, is really like, we're talking about the lowest 20% of people. Not 60, the lowest 60% of people. You know what I'm saying?
Are the income numbers given to us by PSU to work with?
Looked like it was sourced in 2023.
I think it's a combination, the consultant uses a combination of numbers. They get some metrics from the state, not necessarily PSU, but from the state. Jenny, I wanted to comment on your comment and um, we, I agree that, you know, there's, it is kind of scary to me when you look at that, you know, affordability, that cap of, of, that, you know, you could, a lot of affordable housing is at 80%, and you could basically be making $100,000, and that's not enough. But, you know, we tonight here have focused on the 0 to 60 because that's where DLCD said we were lacking. And a lot of our other strategies really do capture that more like 50 to 120, which is kind of more middle range. Um, I'm trying to multitask here. So, you know, I think there's always room for, you know, expanding and allowing, but that's kind of, we focused really on that narrower um, segment tonight because that, that is really where they said we're lacking, where everything else is really addressing that broader area.
I guess I'm just saying, people can't qualify for mortgages at that level with the income levels posted.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm, I'm not saying that we don't need to focus on the lowest category of the 0 to 60, but in reality, 0 to 60%. That's not the buying power that we're seeing represented in some of the analysis. Like, it's not really an accurate representation of who can buy what with certain incomes. And so to whatever extent we can apply logic and reality to our assumptions, I think it would behoove us to try. Because then we might actually be helping more people at the level we're intending to, rather than, you know, just rolling with some of the other assumptions that are there.
This, if there are suggestions on other strategies, we're happy to consider those. I mean, and we've, we've tried to include, I mean, really on this, on the list, ultimately where this comes down to is a list of strategies. If there are others, um, this is not easy. Generally speaking, income levels have not kept up, period. This in general, from, from the rate of inflation, those kinds of things. That's one of those things, wages haven't kept up. And the metrics have changed, I think. That we've been doing this for a couple of years in terms of this process. And even within that window, things have gotten more expensive. I don't disagree. I um, I think that it's really about the strategies though in the end, like, is there something we're missing from this list or others? And it's not all about the low end, because like, I totally agree with Emma that most of them, and that was the challenge that we got back, is there was very little comment on the upper end. It's like two thumbs up. On the upper end of being able to, to address those, but the lower end was like, no, you're not getting two thumbs up.
Yeah. No, I think your strategies are pretty much all we have at our disposal. I think you guys have been very thorough.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm just saying is, as we go from here, um, I don't see it in a lot of the documentation that we look at these days, but sometimes things are looked at in terms of how many times your income is the average cost of housing? So if you make $100,000 a year and the average house is 600,000 or 650, or eking into 700,000, what does that mean in real terms when it costs seven times your annual income for a house? Because once upon a time, it was maybe three times your income for a house. And now we're looking at exponentially more. And so if we're not, you know, I don't know if that could be looked at in some way, shape or form to apply to these kinds of things.
I remember when the consultant that brought that slide to us the first time, it wasn't theirs, but there was some metric included in that, like 560, it's not going to be your first home, right? And you're bringing, I think he said on average, a 200,000 down payment. So they bring that into the number. So yes, you can afford that mortgage because you're bringing a big down payment. That's what part of it, the mix. A lot of, at that price, a lot of people have good down payment.
Or you got in when your house cost 350 and now it's worth 7.
Yeah, right, exactly.
But for anybody who's trying to get into the market, the lowest stuff is not going to be lower than 350.
The down payment, the, the average down payment, he did mention that, I remember it, because we all like, whoa, wait a minute, you know? Black and white, yeah, you couldn't afford that mortgage, but at that price, you're bringing down payment to the picture.
Yeah, but we're trying to talk about getting people into any kind of housing, and we can't assume that people can come up with 20%.
It wasn't an assumption, it was statistics that they had, yeah.
I think once upon a time, people did that, but I don't think they do anymore.
I don't know, we have Realtor people here.
It is case by case. Um, just being blatantly honest. I see, I have a um, a lot of buyers that are, that are pre-approved, not a lot. I have a handful of buyers that are pre-approved in what I would still consider to be the first-time homebuyer price point, which is anything under 400,000. They can't buy a damn thing, if I'm being honest. Unless it's these infills in Portland, which for one of them is perfect sheet, that's exactly what she's looking for. So we will find her something. But um, you can't get into that, and that's not really an option here in town. Um, and one, the one in particular is very well qualified, makes um, a little over 100 grand a year, and, and that's with the current interest rate, she doesn't have a massive down payment. She's a first-time homebuyer. She doesn't, she cannot qualify for more than that because the interest rate and HOA fees will bump her out of any mortgage payment. And her mortgage is going to be looking, I mean, it's well over two grand. It's not cheap. So dealing with that, then you have the folks who come in and it is their second house, or maybe they have a gift fund, or maybe, you know, you never know what it, what it is, and they have a sizable down payment, even if it is their first home. And it's a lot less of an issue because they can buy down mortgage points and therefore the interest rate, you know, there's ways around it, but it's really, that's why when I listen to all the, like, what the statistics and average, I'm just fascinated to know very specifically where it comes from. Because every situation that at least I see firsthand is so different. Some folks wa- walk in with a couple hundred thousand dollars, with a down payment, and it makes their lives way easier, it makes their monthly payments go down. And most folks I see are squeaking in with 3 and maybe 5%. I can't remember the last time I had a buyer that had more than 10%. So it's, it's just, it depends. It really depends on the situation.
But I would argue that we should be focusing on the people who do not have down payments.
Sure.
Because if we're trying to focus on helping out the people on the lower end, when you are making less than 100% of the MFI, there's no way you're saving up tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay.
You're not in, in there yet.
But, okay, what does that mean to focus on those people?
Does that, does that mean that a condo is now your starter home?
We, we've heard what we're capable of doing here in the city to contribute to, to that, right? We've seen those options. What else are we talking about doing? What else are you talking about doing in terms of focusing?
When I say focusing, I guess it's maybe saying, in terms of our own conversations of what do we think? When we get to the point of talking details about, we're going to offer X number of years or X number of discount or whatever to people who fall into certain income categories, that it might be worth being more generous with that than just the 0 to 60% MFI focus. Because the 60, up to 60% MFI is basically an inflated concept of how much people are working with.
You're saying that that 0 to 60 is not truly encompassing like-
0 to 60% for real. Yeah, because every single person in life has some kind of money output going to things other than just their housing. And these numbers are looking at, if you had no other bills whatsoever, what could you feasibly afford? So if we're saying, just to make the numbers easy, MFI was $100,000 a year, and therefore $60,000 of year of income should buy you so much or get you so far in the housing market, realistically, that's not going to happen. Because realistically, you don't have that much buying power with a $60,000 income. So maybe we don't want to cap the things that are intended to help the people on the lowest end of income, the very low-income people, the mid-low-income people. Instead of saying the MFI should be 60%, maybe it needs to be 90%. Maybe it needs even be 110% in some instances, because the housing market just keeps getting more expensive. More multiples away from what people are actually making, and their buying power is considerably less than a lot of these assumptions.
Okay, but my only comeback to that is, you saw the forecast over 20 years for how many units that would take to accommodate the forecast. There's going to be an impact of cost to the city.
Yep.
To support that.
Yep.
So what you're saying, in effect, what I hear, is that you're going to take that, reduce that down to next to nothing, and it's going to now cost shift to the top two categories of houses. That's, it's got to go somewhere, right? Unless the city is so flush with cash that they just say, screw it, we don't, we don't need the money.
Worth considering.
I mean, I would say that there's a half a dozen streets in my neighborhood that need to be fixed up, but in an alleyway.
We chose to keep our taxes in the state, and we've chose, chosen it nationally. It's over and over and over again. We have chosen crappy roads, and we have chosen fewer parks, and we have chosen lackluster schools.
Yeah.
These are all our choices. And so if we want to solve a problem, we've got to solve the problem. And we've got to not let our affectations affect our judgment, just because we're used to what we've dealt ourselves thus far.
Well, outside of this bite, I mean, we're talking legislation and, and bigger, and a, a bigger will on a state level, right, to, to address it.
But it's like the SDCs, is it's like the SDCs aren't a standalone item, they're a remedy. You know, and if we are, we are curtailing that remedy so that we can have another positive effect, you know, and that's all, I mean- you know, and that's all, I mean, we've decided to pay what we've decided to pay, and the property tax limitations are biting us, and we've got to fill them up somehow. But then again, you know, filling them up somehow puts the burden on people who don't own houses yet. And it's where they're subsidizing the people who already own their houses through the low taxes. So, you know, I really don't think staring at the S D Cs and saying, well, because we reduced the ones at the low end, then that means the ones at the high end have to pay. I mean, theoretically, yes, but I think it goes a lot broader than that as far as city politics is concerned. And again, it's like, it's not in a box. You know, the S D Cs are performing a function within the city government, and I don't think that because you eliminate part of them, then that means another part of it needs to take up the burden. Maybe it's somewhere else in the city that needs to do that.
I don't know. I mean, the utilities are still the utilities, right? And the road surfaces are still the roads, I mean, I'm just looking at the hard cost of what it takes to serve services to all these, you know?
You know? The boomers have dealt themselves a low-tax bill for a very long time, and the bills are coming due, and you feel it. I bought a truck because the roads are the way they are in this part of the country. You know, it's not what I prefer to drive, but it'll put up with the potholes. And at some point, we just got to decide to pay more to solve some problems. And I think that we have kind of sat on our laurels long enough.
Yeah, with this, just, I'm just saying, if we really want to focus on helping the amount of people we think we're going to help, we might want to bump up our M F I numbers.
I will say, generally speaking, the, like, Portland Metro, the first-time homebuyer price point, again, in my head, is still anything under 400,000, because that just seems attainable. But the average first-time homebuyer is actually closer to 600,000 in their home, unless they're doing like a townhome, condo, things like that, that will keep it 400 or less. But then you have, usually with that, you have substantial H O A fees that...
And the M F I, I don't, just on that part, these are, they're kind of set. I mean, I think this is a formulaic issue. What we control, back to Matt's point, is this list, and things like reducing minimum lot size in the R1 zone in particular, is the way we should be attacking this. Right now, it's 7,000 square feet, it's a huge lot in the metro area, can go down to 6,300 square feet by Senate Bill 1537, but it can't go below that without a variance, unless you're in a P U D. We just went through this on an infill for somebody that was trying to do a 5,600 square-foot lot to a lot subdivision near the downtown, and that would be completely reasonable in my mind to do that, but impossible based on the code. So that isn't, you know, 5,600 square-foot lot probably is a pretty affordable place. There is no home on it, but that's a lot more affordable than 7,000. It's just the way it goes. So I think that's, that's the part where, the two questions I have for you all before you guys leave tonight is, one, this list, and then, secondly, just to circle back, we spent a huge amount of time on the S D C stuff, and just to get your sense on, you know, the Bancroft Bonding Act, the S D C Payment Plan, thoughts on that, and the construction excise tax, if there was any kind of thoughts regarding the use of that construction excise tax, which is done differently in the metro area. Ours, we are collecting it, it is unrestricted, it's not like the Metro Fund that was done in 2016, which has to be spent on affordable housing, but it is another revenue piece. That's another discussion, back to Commissioner Gerocia's point, that would have another implication on the budget, because it is part of the general fund. So, but just, my two questions are, is there anything else we should be putting on strategies to take to council? And then, secondly, going back to the other things, I want to push this away from the S D C, because we've kind of really over-focused. Now, back to the Bancroft.
I think all three items on the list are good items, especially considering that only one of the strategies that we have listed elsewhere deals was 0 to 30.
Yeah.
So it seems like we're just going back and filling in a part of the plan that was lacking in the past.
Okay.
So that looks good to me.
I would say the same. I think it's a, it's a very comprehensive list. Just as an aside, I think many of you know, I've been spending a lot of time in L A helping family and friends navigate the post-fire, and what L A County has been doing, it's a totally different scenario, but it's amazing how many rabbits they can pull out of a hat to encourage building of all these thousands, tens of thousands of homes, because they're interested in their property taxes being reinstated, right? So these are expensive homes. And so for one thing, very quickly, they eliminated building permit fees, period. So little things. Anyway, it's just been interesting, because I see, I'm down there, and I'm watching the news, and L A's doing this, and L A County's doing that, but they have a huge incentive, you know, and, and a big Olympics to pay for. So they're very incented to get people to build, and it's just an interesting way of looking at it, because they're losing big-time property tax money. That's a lot of empty, big, big, empty lots. So anyway, just, that's why I come up with some of these weird things, because I've been watching L A news so much, sorry.
I'm surprised that the property taxes go away after damage.
You have an empty lot, you have an empty lot.
Well, it still works something.
Versus a $6 million home. So why should you be taxed on a $6 million home?
I didn't know that they would reassess it after damage, you know? I just kind of assumed it would continue on.
Houses are gone.
I know, I understand, but how often does the county reassess?
When there's a disaster, basically.
They do, okay.
Good question.
Disaster, what is that?
Yeah, I was going to say, transfer at time, yeah. And if the taxman comes knocking, you don't answer the door.
Never.
If I hear any new rabbits, I'll let you know.
Other comments on Bancroft bonding, C E T funding, et cetera? Suggestions, thoughts?
That's it, all I got to say for now.
So we'll, we'll get this back in our laps in August, post-council discussion?
You will, and I think council will have probably an equally robust discussion on this. They have been prepped a bit more because of the S D C stuff, but that is also, like, so tangential on, like, suddenly we're talking about parks for like 45 minutes of an hour-long work session. It's like, I look up, and I've got 10 minutes left. It's like, and we haven't covered any, you know, hardly any of, so there's more to cover with them, yeah. So there's a lot of discussion, because we're dealing with all the transportation parks, sewer and storm, and that's a big lift, but, so they have a bit more knowledge of where this is starting.
All right, do we want to move on to planning statutes?
If you have no other comments, yes, please, yes.
Do we have any other comments? No? You may proceed.
Okay. So a few items, just for Planning Commission for updates, just kind of upcoming, we have our June 23 fence code update for our next meeting, and then August 11, we'll be back for Housing Production Strategy for the hearing. Couple of things, just as information, so we have an August 2nd, sorry, August 7 Project Advisory Committee meeting for our Conference of Plan, and August 19, Community Summit at Ackerman Library. Both of those events are at 6:00 P. M., and so that's just additional items there. I don't have a lot of additional updates now. We are going to start to get into more items as we get into the fall, and it's going to be a pretty busy schedule. We have just maybe a preview of that, if I can finally. Sheet, here, here we go. So we have floodplain ordinance that we're having to do as well, due to the biological opinion from Federal Emergency Management Agency. We're working on that with Barry Elsner-Hammond and a consultant, putting that together. That's likely, you're likely going to see that the summer, fall as well. Our Transportation System Plan and our Conference of Plan, looking at August 25 for the Comp Plan Work Session, and September 8 for the Transportation System Plan Work Session. We may also have some joint session on road standards for width of roads on local streets, and this has to do with our Transportation System Plan and what that standard should be width-wise, and considering everything from public work standards that have occurred to fire apparatus standards, what the cost implications are of those, with those, what are the speed implications with those? What, yeah, I mean, there's plenty of parking on a wide street, but you may not be able to cross it, because it's, people are driving 40 miles an hour. So these have to be balanced out.
Where's your sense of adventure, Matt?
So this all, this is all stuff that we're going to be coming to you this fall, and then, as we get into that, hoping for adoption for the Conference of Plan by the end of the year, Transportation System Plan by the end of the year, Housing Production Strategy by the end of the year, and the Floodplain Ordinance by the end of the year. And then next year, we'll be getting into the Urban Growth Boundary Initiation Process. We do have a grant from ODOT, $250,000 grant for concept planning, which will be going along with Urban Growth Boundary Expansion. U O will be involved with some of those discussions as well. There's more to come on that. This is all part of the Urban Growth Boundary piece that we're working on, so...
Are ODOT friends with D L C D? Just curious.
It's a joint grant.
Oh, is it a joint grant? Okay. All right, well, I'll go lay down by my bull then. I'll comply.
So we have been, we have been fortunate to receive these grants, yeah. So, yes. And that was all I have, yeah.
Excellent. Items of interest or guidance from Planning Commission? First, thank you, Emma, great presentation, lot of content, and a very expeditious manner. It was good. Thank you, Jody, for attending, and does anybody on the commission have anything that they want to add before we sign off?
Yeah, I just wanted, I was a little swept up in the beginning. It was very sweet, but I wanted to just take a second and thank each of you, all of you, and the two gentlemen that can't be here tonight, dang it. I'm just very grateful to all of you. I've learned, if nothing else, lots of funny new jokes and quick moments, but this has been an incredible learning experience for me, and I feel like I've picked up stuff I would never, I would never have known or had been able to experience. I'm just very grateful to all of you, so, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. You'll be missed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'll see you at home.
See you.
All right, so if there's not anything else, I will take a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.